All right, we are back. Good evening. I would like to call the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three town council meeting to order. We'll start with roll call. Anne?
Present.
Marty?
Present.
Matthew?
Here.
Dan McGuire, I'm the vice chair of the council, I'm present, obviously. Krista is unfortunately not feeling well, and Josh, good for him, is on vacation. So he won't, we're flying solo tonight. Our meetings are held in person, but we have the online link, which is provided in the agenda header for anybody who's interested. For public hearings, residents can click in to participate or call using the number provided during public hearings, though we don't have any of those this evening. Those are also on the agenda. Could you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The consent agenda includes the minutes from our executive session on December fifth and the minutes from the town council meeting on December fifth. Is there anyone that wants to remove either of those from the consent agenda?
I actually would like to remove the minutes from the regular council meeting, not the executive session.
Okay, so we'll remove the minutes from the twelve-five council meeting. Any other changes?
No, no, overruled.
With that, we'll accept the minutes from the executive session on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And the next item of business is public comments on non-agenda items. Limit three minutes per person.
Did you want my changes to the minutes from twelve-five?
Um, yes, I thank you for stopping me. I thought that that was, we were gonna get another bite at that apple, but we won't, so let's do that first.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is really not that major, but on packet page twelve, under my report, there, I'm suggesting that we add a period after, in the first sentence, add a period after the first phrase, and then add something like, she thought it was very clear, after working on a twenty-year history of efforts to improve the village, that the incremental approach hasn't worked, and effort like the VTP is needed. And the issue there was just, I thought that she really didn't capture the essence of what I was trying to convey, and anybody reading this would be confused about what it was.
So will you send your corrections then to Brett?
Yes.
Directly, okay.
Okay.
With those corrections, can I get a motion then to accept the minutes of the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting?
So moved. Second.
So, Matthew and Marty. Matthew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Now we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda? There's no one that has signed in?
Does that include me?
Actually, you're gonna come up in our regular part of the meeting, so. So seeing none, I'll close the public comments on non-agenda items at seven thirteen. Adjustments to the agenda. I have one that I would like to make. Action item number four, to review and act upon the approval of disabled veteran excise tax exemption retroactive to October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, for Gray residence Dennis M. Davis and William Keith. I would like to move that to action item number two, since the Davises are here and like to comment, so I'd just like to move that up a little further, so they don't have to wait for any objection to that.
No.
Okay, so that will be our new number two then, to talk about. But the first action item we have tonight is to review and act upon approving the bid, as amended on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, for the three-year municipal waste hauling and disposal contract to sell a waste, as recommended by the recycling and solid waste department. So the motion is, ordered the Gray Town Council authorizes the town manager to sign the proposed hauling and disposal services contract from Casella for this project to begin on July first, two thousand and twenty-four, and run for three years, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Two additional one-year renewal options will be considered contingent upon the mutual agreement of both parties. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Marty and Anne. Randy, did you wanna come up and speak to it, or?
If you have any questions.
I don't know if anyone does, but does anyone have any questions for Randy? It does seem all pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I did have one quick question for you, though, just in regards to the, how this, did this come within the budget, or was this, how did that work out in the end?
This is, this will start in the budget.
This will start next year, so we haven't budgeted money for this.
Correct. The budget I submitted has these numbers.
These numbers, okay. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay.
No other thoughts or questions? All right, let's vote. Anne?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Yeah, take care. Have a good holiday.
Oh, I think you'll be surprised. All right, so we're moving to review and act upon the approval of disabled veteran excise tax exemptions retroactive to October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, for Gray residence Dennis M. Davis and William Keith. The motion is, ordered the Gray Town Council grants to request retroactive tax exemptions to disabled veterans and Gray residence Dennis M. Davis and William Keith, including reimbursement for vehicle excise tax in the amount of one thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Does that add up? We can change that number if it's not right. And to William Davis, and to Dennis M. Davis in an amount, pardon me, that was to Dennis Davis, and an amount to be determined for William Keith. Can I get a?
Must approve?
Yep.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Did you wanna come forward and speak, Mr. Davis?
Dennis Davis, I lived on Marie Street, been a resident of Gray since I was born, I born right down there. The state passed the law back in two thousand and eighteen, and it's pretty clear that you guys have copies of this law. I have copies of it printed right here, if you'd like one.
I don't, we do not have actual copies of the law.
Yeah, I don't think I've seen it yet.
Right with us now.
Yeah.
It's pretty exact in its wording.
Thank you.
And it didn't take me long to find it, which was kinda surprised me.
Just so you know, Mr. Davis, no one can hear you unless you're in front of the mic there, just so you know.
As I started to say, the state passed a law in two thousand and eighteen, the council has a copy of it. The important part of it to me is automobile owners by veterans who have granted free registration of their vehicle by the Secretary of State, under title twenty-nine A, section five two three, section one, or who provide certification from the United States Department of Veterans Affairs, or any branch of the Armed Forces of the United States, that they are permanently disabled and receive benefits on a rating of a hundred percent for service connected disability. Seems pretty clear on it. So I was wondering why there's only two people that applied for this, from what you were saying. I'm surprised, I would kinda think that that would entitle me to go back the full five years on paying my excise tax. I'll give you a copy of the last bill for my excise tax, but I don't know if you would consider including the other years, or look them up, some of the other stuff that was fairly important to me.
Well, we can talk, I think, to that issue first. We can talk to that particular issue first, about whether we go back the two years or the five years.
Okay.
The law was written in two thousand and eighteen, is true, and that gave everybody the opportunity to apply that, but it didn't require the towns to necessarily find people and resolve the problem.
Right, but that's part of the problem also. You said the Veterans Administration and the Department of Transportation, whatever, both had different theories on it. I would think that if a person came to the town, if they could show proof that they had the hundred percent, which is, we, each year, we give in a printout of what our disability ratings are, and rather, we're total and permanent. I would think if you were to show those copies, which is part of what we're supposed to do to get this benefit, okay, so we come in here and they say, well, Jesus, you gotta have, your plates ain't right. Well, Jesus, I've been, I'm a disabled veteran, I was wounded several times in Vietnam, you know what I mean? Why do I have to change my plate? So I go change my damn plates, but I don't think that should be a factor in it, for one thing. And I think you're not getting a bunch of people from outside of Gray coming in here and trying to get free excise tax or anything, and even if you were, you could just say, look, you're not a resident of Gray, go to Norway, or go to Poland, go to the town you live in and get it. So I would like to see if I can show you proof that I've been disabled for those five years, that I would get my money back on one vehicle. I have two vehicles, my wife and I both have vehicles, if I could get it back on the one vehicle that we now have the plates on for disabled veterans, I would think that would be a fair, fair equity to me, and to anyone else that could show the same proof. Serve my country, I see you've got a nice parking place for me out there, so many to the efforts of that. I fought, not just in Vietnam, but I fought for the benefits that I've received, and I think this is one of the benefits that was intended for the veterans, you know what I mean? And granted, I have some PTSD, so my thinking isn't always exactly where you would say, this, I'm not Forrest Gump, but I'm not a, you know, I'm not a brain surgeon either. I don't know all the rules, all the laws, and I'm chasing them around, chasing them around, and I help myself out some, but I think this would be a logical solution to it, and if a person can, you haven't gonna have a bunch of people from Gray doing it, but it's my, it was a disability that was supposed to be given to me, I believe, I'm not trying to get something that wasn't mine, I'm getting something that nobody told me about, or very few people told me about, I didn't know about, and I found out about it, you know what I mean? I would think it would be a fair, equitable thing to pay me back those years of excise tax.
All right, well, let's find out what others think. Anyone that wanna jump in?
But I would think that would, you would want a copy of the, I can show you a copy of the paperwork that the government sends me.
Well, I think, yes, there is a requirement within the regulations, and I don't know exactly what they are.
And that, this covers that.
Yeah, that covers that, right. So if you had that for each of the years that you, if you had that proof, then that would prove that you were eligible for that benefit. So the question really is, in our motion, we make the benefit, we go back as far as the date of the application, and what Mr. Davis is asking for is for us to go back to the date the law was enacted. So, Matthew, you wanna?
The date of the application was the two thousand and twenty-one date, that's in the, in the agenda.
Yes.
You know, I haven't seen this document before, but based on, you know, this document, I see the, you know, which is just text of the law.
And I was surprised that the council didn't have that copy, that copy, because I was poring around, trying to get my best evidence that I could, and this came up, but Jesus, pretty black and white.
So let me find out from the rest of the gang, where we're at, and we'll go on from there.
This has caused my thinking to evolve a little bit.
Sure.
But I'm not, I'm not prepared to offer an amendment at this point.
Okay, so you wanna stick with the date in the motion, right? Marty, what do you think?
I agree with him here, and it.
So what are you saying?
We'll go back to when the.
The date that was enacted?
To when it was enacted.
Okay. Anne, what do you say?
My inclination is to agree with Mr. Davis, but I'm, I just, I'm concerned about what this means for other folks, I mean, so far, it's just two. I don't know if there are other, you know, service members in Gray who have this, who qualify for this exemption, but I am concerned about the precedent of going back to two thousand and eighteen for any applicant, so that's my biggest concern. I just, I mean, not just in this, but in other things as well, at the town.
It's like five years, like the statute of limitation, I would say.
Yeah, you're suggesting that it could, we could just say that five years would be the maximum, that we go back? I mean, I just, I'm really, I'm not so much, obviously, I think the town can afford to give you the full benefit back to two thousand and eighteen, so it's not a question of, you know, cost to the town, it's more just establishing a precedent that, you know, if other similar laws get passed, that we would, we would take them back retroactively, that could have more of an expense to the town, so.
I think the law is, to me, I thought, when I see the, saw, see the law passed, I said, well, Jesus, that's gotta be fairly recent, because I'd heard more about it, the veterans would have heard more about it, so I was surprised, but I don't, I think this is an odd situation, where it ain't gonna happen a hell of a lot, this is gonna be this one-time deal, and this is gonna be done.
Well, I think there, you know, I also have mixed feelings, I don't, I don't have any mixed feelings about whether or not you do the benefit.
Yeah.
But what the law does is, the law creates an opportunity, not for people to apply, not a guarantee that the benefit will be given.
I just agree with that.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah. Yes.
I think, you know, the veterans, they get quite a bit, but they, if something's given to them, it should be, it should be followed.
I understand that's your position, yeah. So let me, Matthew, what were you gonna add?
I'm just reviewing this, the council packet on packet page forty-six.
Yeah.
There's an email from Tricia Leathers.
Yep.
With the main, not sure, Division Vehicle Services. And she mentions an update in the law in two thousand and twenty-one. Been much confusion about the excise tax exemption law, and then it says statute referenced in this letter that was updated in two thousand and twenty-one, and many hundred percent disabled veterans have told us they do not wish to have the disabled veteran plates. So I mean, we have this printout from, you know, two thousand and twenty-one, I mean, two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah.
But then apparently, well, it just says two thousand and eighteen in handwriting here, but then apparently, there's been a change to the law in two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah.
So I would, for tonight, I guess I would propose that we approve the motion as it stands, and maybe reconsider, you know, the previous three years at, you know, some other, you know, at a subsequent meeting, if we get more information that, you know, suggests that to be the case, because right now, I mean, our, the advice we have, I believe, from the finance director is in here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Justine's memo is on packet page forty-two.
Forty-two, okay, I'm sorry, I lost that. So, you know, she cites a two thousand and twenty-one, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one law.
Yes.
And asks us to decide, you know, the question presented to us by the finance director is whether or not we go back to October eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one, and that's what the motion suggests, and I think before we vary from the finance director's advice, we should get more information, but I think we should authorize the refund going back to two thousand and twenty-one.
So that'd be three years instead of five.
Yeah. Which is when the law was amended.
Pardon? Two thousand and twenty-one.
Twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Oh, I see. Well, it says here, yeah, the law is effective October eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah.
So subsequent to that date.
Yeah.
Is what the, that's what the motion is, right?
Yes.
So that's what I would support. But I'm not hardened on the idea of going back to two thousand and eighteen, but I think for tonight, based on what's in front of us, and the advice we have from the finance director, I don't think we should go further than that at this point.
Marty?
I can agree with that.
You can, okay. Anne?
Yeah, I'd prefer to go back to twenty-one.
Okay. Yeah, I think I'm there, too. I think that it looks like the majority of us are willing to go back to that October twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one change in the, in the law.
Okay, so.
And we can do that for you, and we can do that for Mr. Keith.
So I should meet with the financial director on the.
Yes, what we'll do is, I think what we'll do is, we'll let the finance director know our decision, and then I think she must have your contact information.
She does.
Yeah, and Mr. Keith, and she'll get in touch with you.
Like I said earlier, she's been very helpful, she's, like, no problems, you know.
Doesn't surprise me to hear that, but I'm glad to hear that, she's always nice.
Better himself.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours and for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Well, and for taking the time to help us solve this problem, to be honest with you, because it's one we didn't really know.
I'm glad, I'm glad I brought that law.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was good to see, thank you so much.
Thank you.
But I think there is, yeah, there is a, you know, this other question about, you know, going forward, is it, you know, it seems like we ought to say, you know, this is a one-year, you know, there's a one-year window for this, or, you know, you present it, you present your information at the time that you do your registration, and that there's not this open-ended, you know, tale going back to two thousand and eighteen, you know, if, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, I understand what you're saying, I think the difficulty is the same difficulty Mr. Davis found himself in, which is, how do you find out about the law? We can certainly put something in our, in our news bulletin, and in our email list, and so all of the avenues that we have to advertise the change and the opportunity for other vets. I had the idea of asking Justine to contact the American Legion, that they may be able to help us.
Yeah.
We did ask the state for a list of disabled vets, but of course, that's confidential information, so we couldn't get that, so we don't really even know how many there are in Gray.
But if somebody did come with the correct plate?
Well, the plate doesn't matter anymore, but if they had the correct paperwork.
But if they had the correct plate, then the clerk would know automatically.
Yes. Yeah, well, the paperwork gets you the plate, the issue was, one department said you needed a specific plate, and that was part of the confusion, but that part's been resolved.
Any, any questions, Paul?
No, I think we're all set.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah.
So, let's take a look at the motion again, because I think we need to make an amendment to it here, from Justine's memo, four hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Oh, yes.
So Anne and Matthew, are you willing to amend the motion, so it reads, ordered the Gray Town Council grants to request retroactive tax exemption to disabled veterans and Gray residence Dennis M. Davis and William Keith, including reimbursement for vehicle excise tax in the amount of one thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents to Dennis M. Davis, and four hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-eight cents to William Keith.
Yes.
I'm fine with that, I thought Marty seconded it, but.
Marty did, sorry, yeah. You are right with that?
Yep.
And you are set with that?
Yes.
All right, we will vote, Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. All right. That went well.
Yeah.
Now we're back to our regularly scheduled number two. It's to remove from the table the proposed main Department of Transportation cooperative agreement for the village transformation projects, but as we discussed in our workshop earlier, we don't have a response back from the main Department of Transportation, so we will not, we'll leave this on the table and address it at our July, at our, pardon me, at our, hopefully that was a mistake.
July, yeah.
At our, at our January second. Hopefully that wasn't like me predicting the future.
Yeah. So we don't need to, like, remove, vote it down, removing, vote?
It's tabled, so, no.
It's just tabled, we still remove it.
If nobody, if nobody makes the motion, we don't have to vote.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Because we didn't, we, if we had assigned today's date to it, which is why we don't assign dates to tabled items.
Yeah.
Then we, sorry, I'm having a cloud here, trying to do the Robert's Rule thing in my head. I believe that this is accurate, and I don't think we'll get, we'll bust any rules if we do it this way, but I don't remember that we signed, we assigned a particular date to this, so we don't have to take any action by a particular date.
Right.
So we can just leave it tabled.
Okay, all right, that's good.
So we don't have to touch it?
We don't have to touch it.
That takes care of three and, two and three.
Yes.
And we already did four.
We already did four.
And we did one, so we're in good shape.
We're moving right along here, even though I feel like I'm, like, windmilling downhill, but, but we're getting there. Reports from the council chair, the council chair's not here this evening. I don't have any, other than to say, I have talked with Krista about our budget agenda, and how we're gonna approach that, and she's been working on the agenda, going over last year's workshops, and sort of looking to pigeonhole everything, it's an assigned dates and times. We did talk about having a kickoff meeting on a Saturday, where we would do basically the expense budget in, for the most part, in the day, we would have a morning session, a break for lunch, and an afternoon session. The feedback from town staff has been really good, that if they, if we can speed up the budget process, they would be happy to give up a s-. they would be happy to give up a Saturday rather than lots of evenings over the course of the next four months.
Yeah.
So nothing is set in cement yet, because we're going to have our own budget workshop to sort of go over all this. But just to kind of preview what's been talked about.
And and the budget workshop is January second, is that right?
I believe so, yeah. I've proposed that we talk about revenue first, which is different than the way we've done it in the past. The re, my logic is that, and that we also follow the articles as they appear on the ballot. So, for instance, the first article is about the moderator, which we don't use during the ballot. The second article is always about revenue. It makes sense to me to talk about revenue before we start figuring out how much we're going to spend for next year. Let's find out what those constraints are. So that would be a change. And then I suggest, and we can decide whether we're going to do this when we have the budget meeting or not, but I suggest we just go down through the the articles. The reason I s- I'm suggesting this is the articles are kind of a mystery to people. And the council spends an inordinate amount of time in May trying to hammer out what the articles are. The articles that were written for the town meeting were pretty exact, and I think that they could be reused. I mean, I don't think we have to reinvent the world, the wheel every year. So Article Three simply gives us the authority to dispose of personal property value less than a hundred thousand dollars and puts that into CIP. We don't have to spend a lot of time on that, but I think it's important for people to understand where that money's going to go, if in fact, we sell property.
So, excuse me, Dan, I just trying to understand when you think we we would do this at our January second workshop? Or or some other time, like part of the Saturday workshop?
The first, the first workshop on revenue, I think, can be a regular budget, a regular council workshop, like meeting before our meeting.
Okay.
I think an hour or two, probably two hours really would be enough to get through all the revenue. And there's the fir, and there's four revenue articles, but they're really pretty simple. You know, allowing us to accept or reject personal donations. We don't have to talk much about that. But I think it's valuable to, the more we discuss it publicly, I think it gives people an opportunity to hear it and become more accustomed to the language and understand the format. The big one is expenses, which is Article Six, and that's the one that I would propose that we use the Saturday for. And the state dictates how we present Article Six to the voters. So if you remember, we have administration, we have municipal finances. Library, parks, and recreation are all bunched together. We have public safety, public works, each of those is separate. Then you have council boards and committees, law enforcement, and community services. But we don't talk about our budget that way when we make it. We s, we kind of go at it piecemeal, and then we put Humpty Dumpty together at the end of it. I'm saying that we should use the what, the way we have to present it to the voters as the framework for our own discussion is really what. And we can talk about that more later. I'm not trying to to get, you know, a response or a yes or no from anybody. But I just wanted to share the idea with you.
When will Josh be back?
Soon. Right before Christmas?
I think so, yeah.
So he'll be there for the?
He'll be here for the January meeting. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And then for the Saturday meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
And are we thinking in January, Saturday, or?
Um, that's something that will work out on the second, if the, if it's something that people want to, want to get into.
I mean, I I do think we should, I'm hoping that we can book that Saturday sooner rather than later, just because, I mean, just, well, to to put it in our calendars, just, we're looking to do a little bit of travel sometime this winter, and and I'm sure other people are as well, so.
I would hope on the second we could do that.
Yeah, okay, that I think that would work. Yeah. I mean, it, I I wonder, but I I, it's, it's, yeah, it's unlikely we're going to be able to ink this before the end of the year, but I I
I was hoping that we would have a budget workshop before now, but we just haven't.
Well, I know, no, absolutely. And and the Saturday thing is a hard, you know, that's hard to book in December especially. I I just, I wonder if there's a way that we can, you know, look at our calendars and start throwing out some dates. I just, it can be hard to schedule those things. And I'm worried that, you know, we'll get to January second, and it'll be like, okay, no, we're not going to do that, we're not, you know, we're not be, going to be able to agree on a date. I I just would like to get those those dates out there and.
We can certainly do that. Now, my my sort of theory to this is as we meet the the, you know, the first and the third Tuesday of the month, I frankly like that way of organizing. If, you know, the Saturday meeting was always the third Saturday in January, just picking a a date out of thin air, and everybody knew that going forward, then, you know, you could plan accordingly. And I'm kind of hoping that we'll get that kind of organization built into the system.
Yeah, and are we thinking of a second, that we'll need a second Saturday to finalize stuff, or how are we?
My thought is, again, this is all, you know, up for discussion, but my thought is that we would have the Saturday meeting, and if we couldn't finish business there, it would carry over to a budget meeting prior to a regular meeting.
Okay.
That we wouldn't necessarily have another Saturday meeting.
Okay, so we, yeah, that that's helpful to know. I was thinking that we had talked about two different Saturdays, maybe one to, I don't know, finalize stuff later on, but it may not be necessary, yeah.
I mean, we also have talked about, we wanted to give the community an opportunity to comment on the budget before we got into the thick of it, as opposed to at the end of the process.
Right.
I don't think we're going to get many takers the first year, just because it's new, but I I still think we we want to model that. I think, you know, we could do that possibly, we could allow that perhaps in the, you know, our second meeting in January. We could allow time for that.
So, right now, for that January sixteen meeting, we don't have a workshop scheduled. Were you, were you suggesting that we, that we should?
Krista, Krista, I'm not suggesting any particular dates. I'm just really sort of previewing what I proposed to Krista for the way to organize the discussion. Uh, now, if you want to talk about dates, I mean, we can certainly do that. I mean, I don't know, just for Yax, what the third Saturday in January looks like for everybody, but.
It's the twentieth.
Would be the twentieth. Or the twenty-seventh would be the next Saturday after that.
I think the third Saturday in January works for me. I don't know if it doesn't work.
It works in January.
I mean, it it.
It wouldn't work in February for me, but it works in January.
And with the staff, the staff has already, you know, been working on their their department budgets, right?
They have started, yes.
Yeah, so they, I mean, the question is whether or not they'd be ready for a January twenty-four workshop.
Well, you know, the other option is, you know, we could, we could pick if, does the third Saturday work for you, Marty? So let's say the third Saturday in, which is the twenty-seven, uh, no, the twentieth. So one-twenty. Let's, for Yax, say one-twenty doesn't work. Let's look out. Would February tenth work?
Currently.
Yeah.
But that seems.
Or February seventeen. I'm just thinking.
Seventeenth does not work for me.
Seventeenth doesn't work for you, okay. I'm just thinking, Anne, that, you know, we were, we proposed this, and and Josh comes back and says, no way, the twentieth will work, it's too soon. I was just looking to have a plan B.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess, yeah, I mean, I was, I I always want to get started on stuff, so that was why, in part, I was pushing for a date and, but I'm also thinking that if we are able to do it all in one day, then it it, I mean, I'm reminding myself that it doesn't have to happen quite so early in January. For example, it could happen in February, because we would, you know, in essence, telescope, you know, the, or or combine what would have been three or four different budget workshops into one day. So, I mean, so that takes care of a big chunk of time that has in the past taken, you know, taken us to do the budget.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a month worth of meetings.
Right, exactly, yeah. So I'm, I'm feeling less, and knowing that we're really just talking about one Saturday as opposed to two makes me feel like I can probably schedule around that, so. But I, I mean, I, let's, I I think it would be good to just throw out a couple of dates to to the staff and just see what that would work for them, based on how ready they are to present their budgets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would, does February tenth work? Was, is February tenth the date that works for?
Yeah, the only, the only Saturday I've got blocked out is the seventeenth of February.
Okay, right now, yeah, the, I'll I'll just put a, I'll put a hole in my calendar.
On the tenth?
Yeah, as well as on the.
Twentieth.
Or the twentieth, yeah.
If we propose to talk about revenue first, I fully expect that to generate a certain amount of anxiety for Justine and Lauren, because there are, there are a great number of unknowns.
Oh, great number.
And I think it's important to realize that a lot of the reasons why we've talked about revenue at the very end is because we've waited to get as much information as we could to make it as. So I think, and and no matter when we learn about revenue, we always have that last-minute discussion check-in. So that will still happen. I mean, if we we put together a budget and say we're done by March, we're still in the spring going to have to have a, yeah, a reality check to see that our numbers are still good, our assumptions have held and everything. But I think that it's much better for us to to do that than the kind of, I won't say panic, but the.
Yeah, pressure.
The pressure that that everybody is under. That's really what I would like us to try and relieve.
And so, I mean, I I'm hard, I'm having a hard time on seeing a two-hour budget workshop to talk about revenue when the war, you know, especially following the warrant articles, since, I mean, I don't know that there would be a lot to talk about under each of those, right, for revenue?
Well, we'll, I mean, what are some of the assumptions? So, for instance, in in finance, Justine's talked about doing three-year averages, so for expenses and for revenues. Because obviously, from, she has no experience, so from her her fallback position, which makes a lot of sense, we've actually talked about doing three-year averages in the past anyways, is to sort of come up with three-year averages.
For for revenue?
For, well, for either, for revenue or for expenses. You know, we always have a conversation about the state of the economy. Is it improving? We have a sense of excise tax, for instance, and and all of those things, you know, it's always a guess. Are we, are people going to buy more cars next year than this year? You know, we we go into those things with the knowledge that we have at the time we make those decisions, but they're always ed, estimates.
You've got to be conservative on the, the revenue side and kind of pessimist on the expense side.
Well, it it's, it it makes sense to be as accurate as you can be. You, obviously, you don't want to overestimate your revenue and then not have enough revenue to meet your expenses.
So, are we, are are we talking about, talking about revenue on January second? Is that?
We're, on January second, we're going to be talking about this whole process of how we want to do it.
Yeah.
So we're not necessarily going to have
No.
sort of revenue projections.
We're not going to have any concrete discussions about the budget. It'll just strictly be process.
Okay.
What do you want to see? How do you want to do it? So, yeah, so we don't, and the reason I bring it up now, I guess, is to get the juices flowing, so that when the second comes along, everybody's got some thought behind it and can make a suggestion if they have.
Right, and and we can get, hopefully, we can, at that time or or now, get some idea of when staff would be ready to be ready to provide those, you know, the numbers for revenue, let's say.
Yes.
In terms, and then we could say, well, that's when we're going to meet on revenue, perhaps before a council meeting in in preparation for the the big, the the big Saturday.
And again, I think it's going to, it's a process of refinement, so we may, I I would fully expect that we'll have more than one discussion about revenue for the very reason, just because as we, you know, the state doesn't even tell, the state doesn't make its calculations until July after we vote on our budget. So that's why it's important to make everybody understand that it is an estimate of what we what we expect to get. So, yeah, so I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it now, but I did want to get everybody thinking about it. I think I succeeded there. Come with your your best ideas about how to, I think, streamline the budget process.
Yeah.
It is, folks, you know, it's a lot of money. Don't misunderstand me, anybody who's listening. And it's important that we focus on that money, but I've, you know, worked in other organizations with much larger budgets, and we should be able to, I think, improve this process.
Yeah, me too.
And we have some new people working with us now who have a lot of other experiences, and hopefully, you know, they'll bring their ideas to the table too. Let me discuss it on the second.
Yeah, sounds great.
And that's all I have. So, moving on.
Will, Justine will be there on the second?
The, I don't know if any of the staff will be there on the second, but Josh will be to rec, to to represent them, yeah. So if they have concerns, they will bring them to us via Josh. Uh, we don't have a report tonight from the town manager, who hopefully has lots of pictures of Northern Lights that he can show us at some future date. So now we're off to committee reports. You want to start, Anne?
Yeah. So Resiliency met twice in December, um, the second, and last week is when they met last. They'd originally hoped that they'd be ready to do a workshop with the council in January, but decided that February would be more realistic, especially given the holidays. And as I mentioned in the workshop earlier, the state released the grant that they're interested in applying for. It's a fifty thousand dollar grant, and it's due around the end of March. And towns that haven't previously applied for these funds are the only ones eligible for this round, so there's some incentive to jump on it earlier rather than waiting for a second round later in twenty, twenty-two-four. And so they remain really excited about the work they're doing, and and we'll be talking to them more in early twenty-two-four. Open Space had a great meeting. As I said, the workshop is just really exciting to see how these members have have developed a more thorough understanding of the work that they need to do and and how they can collaborate or, you know, kind of work closely with the council and the planning board on conserving open space. And we're just in a completely different place than we were a few years ago before we started all this work with Open Space, so I'm excited about that. They're going to meet with the planning board in January to talk about just to sort of formalize a process whereby subdivision developers come to Open Space very early on, before they've spent, you know, expended a lot of money drawing up their plans to help conceptualize where the best place in the lot that they're planning to develop would be for the open space and connectivity to other trails in town. So that's planned, I think, now for January eleventh. And Doug Webster also joined the committee at the last meeting to talk through the subdivision open space ordinance. Got some good input on that. CEDC is still looking for members. We haven't, it hasn't met. And the Village Transformation Project, Krista and I met with Dale Doughty, who's the planning director for MDOT last Thursday to review the council's comments on the cooperative agreement. He seemed agreeable to just about everything, no major pushbacks. He agreed to a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit in the, in the
Oh, good.
the village, which isn't the twenty miles per hour that we were hoping for, but it's way better than thirty-five miles per hour, which is what we have now. Ernie Martin, who has served as project manager on this, has been, is super busy working on some other stuff, so his boss is going to step in and take over for him, in the short term anyway, which sounded very positive. We'll likely see Ernie back later on. So we're looking forward to getting this cooperative agreement signed. I I sent it to our legal counsel. I think I sent it to her yesterday, and and she's planning to get back to me by the end of the week and and with her comments, so that we're going to be ready to, hopefully, we'll have the MDOT comments back. It's also in their legal review, but back in time for us to vote on it and approve it at our January second meeting. That's the goal.
Very good, thank you. Marty?
Okay, Blueberry, Blueberry Festival met December fourteenth via Zoom, and I was unable to attend because we were at that meeting with the potential town managers. The Zoning Board of Appeals will meet December twenty-seventh at seven o'clock. And on December sixth, the board met. And on December 6th, the board met for, for a brief meeting at the library with the, with the folks that, that wanted the, um, um, the, the, uh, the variance for their property on, on Lewiston Road. Planning will meet, uh, Jan-, January 11th at 7:00 and on the 8th of December, they had a site walk on Eagles Nest Road. And no meetings have been announced for Finance or Community Day, and that's all I've got.
Thanks, Marty. Matthew?
Um, the only committee that's met since, uh, our last council meeting was the Dry Mill Schoolhouse. Um, they met, uh, yesterday evening and I was not there. They, I think they met on Zoom, but I was occupied, distracted by the, by the storm. I saw the town offices had been closed and I didn't think of town matters at all. Unfortunately, I, if I miss the meeting, um, and, and I hope they don't think I'm neglecting them. And my ne- next committee is the Gray Community TV Committee next week on the 27th at 4:00 PM. And then the REC committee is, uh, January, that'll be after our next meeting, so that's all I've got.
Great, thank you. Um, as Marty mentioned, planning board issues, um, um, finance issues. I really don't have anything to add for committee reports. We were, um, interviewing town manager candidates during the last planning board meeting, so. We'll move on to council correspondence and activities, Matthew, you want to start?
Um, I did get an email, um, with an attachment and I, this is, you know, I've got this, paranoia about opening attachments, I guess, uh, from, you know, from folks I, you know, I'm not that familiar with, I get it, and so I didn't open the attachment, but I think you all, I think we all got it.
Mm-hmm.
From, from Bill Chapman.
Yes.
Um, so I haven't read the attachment, but that's, that's the only correspondence I've got.
It is okay to open, so.
Okay.
Marty?
Yes, I received the same email and, uh.
Mike?
Oh, yes, I received the, the, the same email and, um, I'm guessing that's going to be a long, long drawn out, um, uh, issue.
Okay, um, also, I, I'm sorry, I got a, I got an email just this evening from Token Cannabis Company asking, uh, you know, for me to visit them.
Yeah, I think we're all going to get that email.
Yeah.
Ian, or, sorry, Marty, did you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Yeah, um, let's see, um, I got that same email and our, our protocol is just, uh, when, when someone sends the entire council an email through, especially like through the website or something like that, um, which is what happened here. Our, um, our protocol is that the council chair responds on behalf of the council, so I just sort of make note of that. Although, I, um, Bill Chapman also called me and I haven't yet gotten back to him. I, I don't have cell service in my house particularly at this point right now and, and my phone line's been down as well, been nuts. Um, I don't have power either, uh, and I think that's it, it's been, it was a pretty quiet, uh, couple of weeks.
It has been pretty quiet. Um, as others mentioned, I also received Bill Chapman's email and the attachment. I had spoken to Bill before about the issues, um, that he raised and as Marty said, we'll, um, address that at another time. I also have spoken with Gerald Fawcett, who's the president of the Deer Acres Road Association. I mentioned that, uh, earlier during the workshop. Um, he has also written an email to Krista and to Doug, um, asking for a workshop with the council and a meeting with staff, um, so that they can run by their ideas for the improvements to Deer Acres. Um, they are still working with a goal in mind of the town accepting the Deer Acres Road. Um, I have suggested to him, um, on several occasions, that it would behoove him to make sure he works with staff and the council, um, on any such agreement if, if one's going to happen before they start spending oodles of money.
Yeah.
Um, because.
Yeah.
I cannot guarantee that the council would support that, that effort, so that's out there in the future too. Um, as, uh, Matthew said earlier, I also attended the MMA's cannabis webinar, which I found, um, very informative, but also probably generated as many questions as it answered. I think that's going to be a, um, I think we're going to have to do a lot of homework on that one, really before we even start the discussion, before we're going to end up. It's going to be one of those things where we're going to do something, learn something new, and then have to undo it and do it again. And I think we should really try and avoid that. Um, and then the last one was the town manager interviews. Um, we interviewed four candidates, um, three will move on to the next phase of the interview process. Um, but that's my update for correspondence and activities.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that I also, uh, watched that, um, Zoom or the webinar on cannabis and, and, uh, and my impression from that briefly was, um, it's complicated, yes, especially because you, you know, if you toggle back and forth between medical and recreational, um, but it's also, my, my dad had, was fond of aphorisms and, uh, one of his favorites was "Other fools have done it", and I, I feel like there really have been a lot of other towns in the state that have, have, you know, ventured forth on this one and, and have something that they can teach us about how to do it right. So I, I think between, uh, sort of mentor towns and, and, um, and advice from our, you know, from the, the state office and from our legal counsel, I'm pretty sure we could put this together.
Yeah, I'm not as confident as you are, but I was also very surprised that only 19 other towns have authorized retail marijuana sales.
Yeah, the recreational.
Really recreational.
Yeah, yeah.
I was very surprised that it was that low a number, so I think that does speak to the, the complexities of the web that we use, but we'll get into that when.
Yeah, but I think we were also just talking about medical retail, right, I mean, I think, uh.
No, we're being asked to, you, you have been asked by different groups to do different things. Some of them have been interested in medical, some of them are interested in retail.
Well, they're medical retail, right, I mean, it's a, it's, that's, it's retail, but for medical.
I thought adult use was on the, on the table.
Recreational, I think, has also been part of the request.
I haven't heard that.
Okay, well, I, I, yeah.
But it may have come up with others, yeah.
You're right, it will, if it isn't, it will be a lot easier.
You're right.
Um, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Nobody's in a hurry to adjourn.
I'll go with the ends of the table, Matthew and Ian.
Oh, oh, I didn't hear that, it was, it was unison, huh?
Ian?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm reluctantly a yes. Good night, everyone, and thank you very much.
Excellent job, Dan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One hour.
And then Krista's going to regret that she missed this one, yeah.